Is it 9:00? Is it 9:00 somewhere?
It is.
All right, let's do this thing.
You're good?
Let's do this thing.
Barbie?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, I'd like to call the Village Council meeting, Agenda May 28, 2020, 9:00 a.m. To order, I show that we have two council members present, Mayor Protem Vandenberg and Councilman Jamie Line. And we believe we have Bob on the phone, is that correct, Bob?
There he is, there he is.
Yeah, just went to the front door, Derek just dropped off the information.
Oh, okay, okay, it's good that you're close by, so. Anyway, first off, we have on the agenda, is adoption of the agenda, do we have any any changes, additions, subtractions, or anything we want to change before we move forward?
No.
All good?
All good.
I'm fine.
All right, I'll need a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
So moved.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, so first up, we have in presentations, PRG Master Greenway Plan.
Rohit, yes.
I'm going to be presenting that. You can give me one second to pull it up. All right.
Oh, it's like, who are all these people?
That's us.
Yeah, that's us, Matthew Blazek is actually our planning intern, he's on the call today. I think I'll introduce him in my planning report, though.
Oh, hey, Matthew, even though you can't talk background with me.
Sure, okay, so.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I guess he can introduce himself, but maybe use him later.
That's fine.
Okay, so, I'll just go through the general timeline for now, the company, Destination by Design, is going to give the final draft report to the PRG on their, at their June 2 meeting, and then give their, then after the recommendations, give their final draft report to the council at the June 9 meeting. So this is more for you to be able to see the draft, you know, before or then, and to understand the components of it, and why it's so much better than our existing draft. So the main, the main components that this consultant worked on, you can start from the top, are the benefits section, which is a section about why Greenway Network is good, you know, for your health, for your for your property values, et cetera, and then they quickly go into the trail network itself. You can see the trail network broken down first into segments where they show the opportunities, as in what is good about the segments that we're planning, and then also on the next page, the constraints, so what issues we need to look out for when we are up to that, up to building that segment, and then later, let's see, so they've described the, they've summarized the community survey, I gave that to them as part of the project, and clearly, there's a preference for greenways, you know, 77% wanted more parks open space, 78% wanted more greenways, et cetera, so the next part we have is the Greenway classification, and that was one thing that was kind of confusing in our current master plan, so they've consolidated that into four greenway trail types, and I can just go through them real quick, there's the DOT side path, which is the type of, you know, sidewalk or greenway that's just alongside a road, there's a typical greenway, which is similar, but not along a road. Then there's a crushed stone path, which is a lot of what we're doing, like the one in the preserve that was just finished, and a natural surface trail, which we're doing less, but some of them will still be kind of, you know, like a dirt type of, you know, flat dirt, but well-maintained natural trail. So, let's see, now on page 30, 31, they've gone through each of our segments, and this is one thing that Councilman Vandenberg said before, you know, with the CIP that was proposed a few months ago, you know, you really want to see a comprehensive, you know, consideration of all the trails on our network, and the cost, and how, and the phasing, how we would go about building those, and that's another thing that they did in this project here, so they've grouped segments together.
That was smart of me.
Well, no, that's a really important consideration.
No, it is, I know, I was like, oh yeah, that was, that's smart of me.
Right, CIP is not effective if it doesn't include everything, and so they have gone and created funding cost estimations for each of these segments based on the constraints and the benefits, and the figure, of course, would seem a little high, I think they summarized it at 20 million, but of course, in this draft, they haven't completed it, but in the final draft, they will have completed a funding section where we can leverage grants and regional support, especially the big-ticket items are going to be like Newtown Road, you know, eventually, like in a 20-year vision, we'll want the park to be, you know, walkable, and most of that's in the county, so we're going to see how we can leverage regional support to get, to get all these segments built.
So Rohit, you said this is not the final draft?
This is not the final draft.
Okay, but they're planning on having that by Tuesday?
Next, yeah, next Tuesday for the PRG meeting. In fact, they, they sent it to me yesterday, so I couldn't put it
Okay, no, that's fine, I just know that's fine.
Last week, but they are on schedule to finish the project by the end of the month.
So Parks, Trek and Greenway, I'll take a look at it, see if there's any changes that they want to make to it, and then it'll come to us for final approval?
Yeah, on the 9th meeting.
With the vendor being here to present and ask questions.
Oh, good, on the 9th, okay, good. Is it that, is it who we talked to on the phone? Two meetings ago? Yeah, what I've had over
Uh, two PRG meetings ago, yes, yes.
Sorry.
No, that's fine, they're also going to be presenting at the PRG meeting next week.
Perfect.
All right, so this is, this is their specifics on how they would build it out, and finally, they've just concluded the survey to show that they've incorporated community feedback. So that's the general layout of it, and I had 10 minutes, I took 10 minutes.
Rohit, I just wanted to ask you, are you on page 31, is that what you're showing everybody?
Uh, yes, I was.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
Rohit, real quick, how do grants really work? Because we haven't been successful in that, do they, like, award them, say to us, from the federal or whatever state level, and then we need to kind of pony up our own funds, and does that work need to be completed before we can go on to another grant, or can we have multiple grants going at the same time, because we're working off a very small budget, that number scares the light out of me, and that means, you know, anytime you put a shovel to dirt, you know, you have to maintain it and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, sure, so it does depend on the grant, there are private grants and public grants, federal grants usually require a match, private grants sometimes do, and I don't think there's a limitation on, you have to finish a project before you get to the next one, but there is usually a limitation on, in what timeframe you need to start the project, and what timeframe you need to end the project when you receive a grant. So applying for grants, of course, that's, we find out about grants, they, the company here, being aware of many grants that we are not, are going to provide us some grants that we could then apply for, and then hopefully get, we, I attended a grant writing workshop earlier this month, so, not this month, earlier this year, so hopefully, we can use some of the tips that we learned to write a winning grant application. I understand that we've not been that successful in the past, but there's also regional support, again, CARCO is excited to provide the bicycle and pedestrian connections in the central area, we also have to apply for that, but, you know, they offer, you know, in the tune of millions of dollars of support, as well as just understanding, even though the total ticket number is 20 million, we're talking, you know, five, 10, 20-year phasing, depending on, you know, our segments, and they've also broken it down in this document, prioritization, they've, they've listed our segments that should be short-term, priority, medium, and long-term, and that kind of matches up with the CIP, I gave them our draft CIP, so that they could use that for, you know, just like comparison.
And that 20 million doesn't, is only Marvin stuff, or does it include other?
It includes this whole map, and you can see
So a lot of it is not Marvin?
Right, right, there are a lot of segments, and a lot of big-ticket segments, like I'm saying Newtown Road is the biggest, you know, biggest ticket segment, and then there's this power line connector too, those are our, those are our long-term vision plans, and hopefully, by then, we'll have, you know, secure some of the, you know, the easier segments, the one, especially the ones that are in our five-year plan already.
What, what are our, like, the S1, C1, is that just
They've broken it down by two segments, it was kind of a carryover from our previous Parks and Greenway master plan, the spine is like the main core of the Greenway network.
So would that be the S?
Yes, that would be the S, in the map, it's also green, and the C sections are the connector section, so S is spine and C is connector.
Okay.
And that's just for us to know, again, that's more so for priority, but also, if we were going to make, if we're going to make segments, say, you know, nicer or quicker than others, we should focus on the spine, and, you know, the connector is not, you know, we can do projects simultaneously, of course, we don't have to do one at a time, but the spine is where we need to put our, more of our efforts on completing first.
Sure.
A lot of great things come out of a C-section.
Yeah.
Um, he
Oh. I just got it.
Yeah, you're too young for that, Rohit.
The, just a note, as we go forward and we consider grants, I mean, you know, hey, this is an opportunity, if we get a website out, that we could tap into some of the private individuals that live here in Marvin or in the surrounding areas that would like to see that, and maybe go after the private sector, there could be people that are willing to, you know, do something like that, and maybe you name a path or something like that, so I think there's multiple ways to get
Yeah, of course.
Funding for, because the 20 million scares me even over five, 10 years, we still, we don't, our budget just is not anywhere near that, so.
And I'm still thinking that the, say the Newtown Road, that's going to be a, maybe a 15 to 20-year project, power line maybe as well, but, you know, we looked into a text-to-donate type thing, where you could put a sign out somewhere, if you want a trail here, you can text this number and donate some money, and that's something we have to pay for, but if we can see if that nets us, you know, positive amount of money that can go towards trail construction, also, you know, fundraisers and stuff, there are a lot of opportunities to come up to that 20 million.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you, Rohit.
I just have a quick question, Rohit, because you were talking to the screen.
Oh, sure, sorry.
How much, no, it's okay, thank you. The question I had, I'm looking at page 31, so I guess these are pretty simplistic questions, I went through the whole thing, plan, seems well done. Page 31, and I might have missed what you said, what, if this were to happen, what kind of timeframe was there on this?
Um, this consultant didn't come up with the exact timeframe, but rather, they came up with like a short, medium, and long-term prioritization matrix, it's up to us, as, you know, as the government, to come up with the timeframe based on how much funding is actually available.
So, what just dropped off to me, is that
Unrelated.
A compilation of what, an estimate of what this would cost, if this, let's say, page 31 was put in?
Yeah, you can see on page 30, they estimated the total cost at 20 million, but again, you know, Joe's saying, oh, that, that looks like a big number, but we can focus on a lot smaller segments first with an available budget, you know, I think maybe 100,000 a year or so, and then, and then go forward with, with grant applications, and again, regional support, CARCO is willing to give the tune of millions to major Greenway connections, and I'm also simultaneously applying for that, and so, so there are a lot of other ways to get up to that 20 million other than our own general fund.
Councilmember Mark Lacy, the information that was dropped off to you is unrelated to this item, so we'll get to that in just a little bit.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I looked at that, but thank you, the last one I had was, and Barbie, thank you for the map, you know, expand, and this was very clear.
You're welcome.
I'm surprised how clear it was, the car that has the star, where is that actually located?
Um, there
Oppose bar.
One second, I think there are a couple of them, there are three, and these are parcels that we've long identified as important parcels to look at for withholding for parks. The one at the very north, I talked about a few months ago, Pulte built townhomes, they built 30 townhomes on 21 acres, but they only built them on four acres, so 17 acres is unbuildable, but I'm in talks with them to get a park, to donate that to us for like a, kind of a boardwalk-type park, they're going to come back to us once they're finished with the construction of those townhomes, because they don't want to mess up their zoning approval with the county. The next one down is 18 acres south of where Broadmoor is going, that's Stacy Howie and Wax on Marvin, 17, 18 acres there, that's also been long identified as a good parcel for a park, it's also at the intersection of several trails, and the Broadmoor is only building, although they own that 17 acres, they're only building the, the six, the 80-something acres above it, and so that's, you know, something to just keep on our radar, and finally, the one below that is a three-acre park that was owned by Pulte, they've actually sold it now, to sell it to, they've sold it to a commercial, like, not, they've sold it to a real estate company to sell as a house parcel, and so, I mean, we have to act fast on that, but that's the third star, the one
Thank you, I actually missed those two, I was actually looking at the one that was north, I was actually looking at that one in particular.
Okay.
And thank you for explaining that.
No problem.
And refresh my memory, any power bill funds can be used to maintain these, or no?
Yes, we can use power bill funds for portions of it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think only the ones along the roadway, though, and the ones that, the roads that we own. Eventually, we'll own more roads than we do now, of course.
Okay. All right, and no other questions, we'll move on, thank you, Rohit.
Okay, Bob, do you have any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Next up, we have Village Hall.
Yes. We have been working with the engineer to come up with some comparative costs for a couple of different options, and again, these numbers are not exact to the T, they're, the italicized numbers are guesses that we have kind of put together, educated guesses from a staff standpoint, the only real numbers that we secured from AMT were the cost of the grading that was the higher cost down the corner of the road, there's still a lot of variables that are to be determined, for instance, the rent, if we were to rent this location that we're at, the long-term rent and how much that would cost, I've estimated that here in this breakdown of a 30-year lease at $1,000 a month, and we didn't put any type of increases in there, although we probably know that there's going to be increases, I just had to put something in here for sake of comparing things. And I made the assumptions that we would basically be taking the same footprint that we've already had plans for, in constructing that, this location, and so these are the numbers that we've come up with. However, in discussions with AMT, they really suggest that we go out and rebid the project now in this current situation, and to also separate the projects from the groundwork and the site work alone by itself, like the actual construction, he feels that just getting the grading and the site work done will be able to reduce the cost, we separated them into two different projects. These are the numbers here, and obviously, I've got three different options, I've got a house purchase in here, I don't know what house that would be, I just threw it in here as another option, if we were even to be able to find something. So I'm happy to entertain questions, but this is kind of the general idea of what we've come up with cost-wise, and there could be some variables that, again, they're unknown, that we haven't accounted for, but in trying to figure out the linear fee for the utilities, the site work, and all that stuff, we've estimated as you've gotten to review.
So as an estimation, just looking at the acquisition rent for 30-year lease, that $1,000, where did we get the $1,000 on?
That's currently what we're paying now.
I know, but that's, we're also paying for building, all we're doing is leasing the land, which all, there's really just land that you're leasing, so I think that number would be significantly less, because we also would take on the maintenance of the property, is my understanding, the building and the land, the only issues that would come up were, is if there was some sort of, you know, something where the landowner would have to step in, a water or whatever break or something like that, if that were to happen.
And we can take that cost out, and they would, it would be comparable to new construction at the end of the road, I just put that in there just for sake of discussion, we can
And you, they pick 30-year lease, just, you know, okay.
Which I wouldn't want to do anything, I wouldn't want to do a lease shorter than 50.
And the only reason I picked 30 is because at some point, after a 30-year building, you're going to have some maintenance costs that are associated, so I just picked 30 just for sake of the lifespan of a building.
Okay. And where are we at, anywhere further with discussions are getting together in the high level with the elders or any of the other group, has anyone spoke to them, or?
I think that has to be the next step, figure out what they're really open to, what they want to charge.
And they're, and they're waiting on us.
Okay, so I think we need to go ahead and schedule that, because without us knowing what that number, that number's a big bogey in terms of time and in terms of cost, because, you know, that jumps it up a lot higher now. If we can get it reasonable, then we still have a commodity on the corner if we build over here, we still have that, that we can do, you know, a park with, or, so we would still have that commodity versus if we just put Town Hall there.
And I didn't, I didn't estimate any indirect revenues or anything that would come, obviously, if you have a farmer's market, or if you're renting out venue space for, like, we have the barn, for instance, I did not put any indirect revenues for constructing here with the ability to have those indirect revenues down that corner, but that is an option if that's something that's chosen.
I mean, again, if we can, if we confirm that, that acquisition rent cost, you know, I know they're not going to want to do it for free, but I wouldn't do it for less than that.
And I did, just so y'all know, I did use the higher estimate in the site work for the Newtown Road, this location right here, of AMT's estimates, just to be safe, so the site work could be lower than what they have here.
So is this structure price the highest bid that we had last time?
Yes.
So either way, it's going to have to go off a rebid wherever we go, so it could even come in a little bit lower, considering the circumstances of what's going on in the country.
We just used those as static numbers because we thought it would be somewhat the same. But yeah, it could be, it could be cheaper here. We can, I guess, we can set up a
I would say that has to be the next step, and then, as soon as possible, and then we can make some decisions, yeah.
So Martin School, what are we, we're talking over there, okay, that's, we just want to be clear, and then, there are no other, right now, as we know, or anybody knows, there are no other areas identified that are in play?
No, not that I'm aware of, no.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely try to set that meeting up and start, like, nailing down specifics.
Yeah, because we could get to building or there quicker if we just, if the conversation doesn't look good, you know, because I mean, we want win-win for both parties and stuff.
And I do, I do want to make a note that the, the assumption that I made in this presentation is that we would keep the plans the same that we have now that they've already been approved, and that would be the same footprint that we would put here, so if you decide that you want to change the footprint, that is an option where we can try to reduce some of that impervious area, that would reduce it even further.
But then, but then it's like, then you're paying for it, for reducing the impervious surface area, and that's going to bring some money down, but then you're spending more money to redo the plans.
You have to do it anyways here.
We'd have to pay to redo the plans?
You would have to redo the plans if we moved here, because the plans are not approved for this location.
No, I know, but we wouldn't have to go to the architect and have the architect redo
We would, because there, it's under a new building code now, but I've put that in here, I've put the new plan cost in there.
But because we've taken so long on the actual construction, because I think we've, I mean, the numbers just aren't working for me when you look at the thing, we just, is that building permit still valid over there?
The last we had checked, which was last year when we bid about around this time, it was still good, now, we haven't made any contact with them since then, so I don't know the answer to that, but there is a chance we may have to redo the plans down there as well, I have, I've made the assumption no in this.
But that very likely could be something that, you know, may be moved if we have to do plans either, either way.
We were very, very close to the reduction in the impervious, so AMT feels like there is a way, if we, if we're going to have to pay to redo the plans, we might as well try to get it down a little bit so that we can reduce some of that site work.
Okay.
Either way, either way we go.
So you're going to work on getting that scheduled?
I'll take care of it.
So you guys could be
And do we want to call a special meeting for that, is that, no, or put it on the work session, or, I'm just trying to make it easy for the elders.
I would have that conversation, and if we can work it out, and then they need to have another meeting with us, then we can do it, but if we can't work it out, then
So your plan is not to have all council members as official meeting, maybe just two council members?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's it, I just want to make sure that we're not having a full council meeting with these, it's just
I don't think, I don't think we're to that point, yes.
Discussions at 50,000 feet.
Yeah, well, hopefully, we're a little lower than that now, but yeah.
Under the unknown, you have demo cost of 50,000.
That's assuming that we had to demolish this, and we couldn't work something out where they would keep it and print it out, so that could be reduced as well. One of the things that I have not estimated in here is there's actually a water impact fee that would have to be charged, so the permits may be a little bit higher any way we go, so either way, any of the options, they've been underestimated on the permits because of that water impact, water tap impact fee, the way Union County charges there.
So what we would be doing, if we did run a line down to here for water, then that benefits the other property owners, because I think they're, they are on a well, or they are not, so they would be on the wells, but they could tap into that.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, Rohit has a map of the water line, and Rohit, are you back there? I'm not really sure exactly where the water line runs, I think it would run up the front of Newtown Road here, the water line would run up the front of Newtown Road?
Yeah, so county said you can't bring it from the preserve, because you can't bring it on people's lots, so the only two options, if we're building the Town Hall somewhere in this area, is to build the water line from Wax on Marvin Road down this way, or to take it from Marvin Road and go this way.
So to answer your question, yes, there would be an impact, a benefit for the property owners down here
Depending which side we come from, and we would probably do it, it's probably based on lineal feet, right, so whether we tap in here or there, it doesn't matter, the sewer line would be probably only one direction, correct?
Yeah, the sewer line, though, we do have a sewer line easement from the preserve in that corner and this corner here.
Okay, so again, it's a matter of which one's closer from a cost standpoint.
And we can map all that out on GIS, which is where we come up with the numbers here.
All right, so you guys get that scheduled?
Yeah, and then we can update this, again, this is estimates only, so once we get some real hard facts, we can change this, and the numbers might
Can you, can you do me a favor and, and just generally find out, hey, everybody calm down now, when you're listening to this, everybody calm down, I'm not talking about selling the corner lot, I just want to know how much that corner lot is worth, so we can put that in here and look at it, because if we build here, and it's a little bit more expensive, then we still have that down there to do something for the community with, we would have two, you know, two, so two for, so everybody calm down.
Yeah, no
I'm not talking about some, but I would like to know what, what, what people think that that corner lot would be worth, so that we can kind of look at
We can pull the tax value, and other than that, we have to give it a praise, but we can just pull the taxes.
And I don't know how that really plays into it, because other than if we were to try and get a loan, you'd look at that as an, as an, something that you would pull. and get a loan, you'd look at that as an, as an, uh, something that you would pull. You'd use that as an asset.
I'm just saying, like, if that's worth a hundred dollars and we're looking at the numbers, then, then we still have that to do a farmer's market, to do a dog park, to do something else with for the community. So I'd like to make it a little bit closer. It's not quite apples to apples, but, you know, an orange for tangerine.
Right. Well, I.
We'll get that tonight.
Usually, well, it all depends on what the zoning is too, zoning effects.
I know. I'm just saying just rough, rough numbers. The lower end of the site work here was about eighty thousand dollars less. So the number that I put in, like in this chart here was the higher numbers. If it comes in less, it would be roughly eighty less.
Okay.
Good deal.
Bob, any other questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Jamie?
No, I'm just, I'm ready to.
Yeah, move on. I mean, not move on, like get going.
I'm ready to, let's, let's.
And do we, we, have we determined who's going to meet with you?
I'll call Scott.
I mean, from a council member. I think one of the council or staff likes.
I think Christina can go. Jamie, Christina, I'm fine with that.
Okay. You don't want any other council members?
No, I mean, you can go.
All right. Well, I'd, I'd be happy to go. I've met with some of them before and just see where they're at, get a, you know.
I'll, I'll send an email to Scott today and see if it's scheduled. Okay. Thank you.
Perfection.
Thank you, Christina. Next up, items of discussion, discussion of council vacancy applications. See, we got a new application. So we have now?
You have five.
Five. We'll be interviewing this afternoon?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have all of the applications here that you, I can either give to you now or can wait till the special call meeting later on today.
It's what was in the packet though, right?
Yeah, but I also have some copies in case everyone doesn't have all the applications.
And that starts at four o'clock?
Does at four o'clock.
And it's an open meeting, right?
Yes.
So anyone could be here for that meeting.
And it's also set up for electronic broadcast too.
And I think we have questions prepared, is that correct?
We actually polled a few different municipalities and compiled questions together that other municipalities that haven't made appointments did. So we've put those together. I have not given them to any council members just for sake of having them secured. So I have them here and we will send a packet to Councilmember Mark Elise close to the time of the interview so that no one sees them before, before the actual interviews take place.
And I'm just stepping in, trying to figure out how this is going to go or how we see this going on. So I will take the lead as far as asking the questions. The questions will all be the same for every candidate.
That's great.
And then after they answer a question, we'll leave some time for any council members or myself to do a deeper dive if we choose to, based on their answers and stuff like that, to be as fair as possible. Okay. And, and, and is our attorney going to be there as well?
He will be.
Okay. All right.
And the, the interview appointments are thirty minutes increments.
So keep that in mind when we're, you know, you're looking at me like I.
Keep that in mind.
I have a lot of questions, I guess. So good. I'm glad we have five people willing to, you know, step into this role, so.
So if we have candidates that come in early before you're finished with the current candidate that you're interviewing, what should we do? Should, should I?
I mean, it's an open meeting. They can sit in here.
They can sit, you, you want them to sit in.
And keep in mind that that person who just interviewed can stay and listen to what the other council members saw, you know, so.
I just wanted to make sure what your pleasure was, that if, if you wanted.
Now, the only thing I'm concerned about is a, the six foot rule and the minimum, we may have to set up something that, you know, a virtual thing that's outside again with the weather. It may not be permissible, but.
Not today.
Just being in an HR role for many years, I would think, especially if you're asking the same questions to everyone, that if that person, even though it is a public, I would just have them stand, wait in their car or wait outside or whatever.
That's, that's what I always think because I.
Because if.
Gives them a chance to prepare.
It gives them a chance to prepare. And, and if I knew that as a candidate, I can sit and listen to every.
No, but I don't know how you're going to be able to.
You can ask them, please, if, you know, you're, 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 you're coming on at, at five o'clock and if, if you don't mind, if you could just wait outside or wait in your car, we'll come out and get you or, you know, wait somewhere that they're not A, hearing the question and they're hearing the response of someone else because that gives them good ideas or bad ideas or whatever they can kind of mask over. That's just.
And there's only five candidates that, so we would ask that of the five candidates and say from a open, public meetings, we will be happy to share with you the minutes or the recording of that ever. But I, I think to Jamie's point, that's exactly right.
And that's, that's why I wanted to ask what you wanted.
The first candidate is, the first candidate by all intensive purposes is the, is the, I shouldn't say worst candidate, but they're in the worst position because they've never heard anything. So candidate two can hear candidate one, you know, candidate five can sit here, sit here and listen to all four others. So I think in fairness, in being fair and being, you know, you have a time, we'll try to get to that time and we'll come, we'll come out and get you.
And, and we may want to consider going forward because of this situation, some sort of rules to put in place in, when we're interviewing in public and stuff because it, it isn't there regardless of who you're interviewing for, what position. I mean, whether it's a position like for staff, it's the same, same thing.
Yeah, but that's a closed meeting.
We, we.
Those are closed.
So I'm just curious, why wouldn't these be closed?
We, they're, we're not allowed to. It has to be an open discussion and deliberation.
It's almost like a town hall piece.
But what I will say to your comment is if we get, get rid of the virtual, like live stream, that would help. And if anybody comes, we would know that a candidate A or candidate B would have a competitive advantage over one of the previous ones. And that's just something y'all would have to consider when you're making your decision. Now, we can stop the live stream, have the interviews be conducted, have them recorded, have them publicized after the meeting. And if anybody comes to the meetings, you guys would know that there was someone sitting here during the middle of those meetings. We, we would have to open them up. If they wanted to come, they could. But y'all just have to consider that in your decision.
And who all plans to be, if council, all council members, so that's one, two, three, four with the mayor?
Three. Because Bob, you're going to call in again, right?
Oh, three.
Correct.
So then.
Three, Christina Chaplin's, that's five.
And that's five. Any other?
Are you going to be here?
Uh, yes, if you want me to be.
That's six.
If you're going to be having a virtual option, I'd like to be here.
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah.
So really only allows.
And there's really.
Eight. It really only allows for two other individuals to be in here, gathering of ten, correct?
Yeah.
So.
No more than two.
And we can, I don't want to say kick you out if we.
Yeah, I can be in and out if, depending on who comes.
Right.
I mean, if you guys are okay with that and think that we could work that, then I'm fine with it. But, because I understand your point. I just didn't know that we could, if it's an open meeting, not have people.
We would still have to invite people or give them the option to.
Right. I was just purely wanting to know about the candidates because if you only have thirty minutes, then you're going to have some that are going to come early. So needed to find out what to do with them.
That's fine. Then you're.
If we needed to put them in the back room or if they get to the car or.
You'll be candidate wrangler.
But I guess before we move on, is that, does that mean you're keeping the online, the WebEx meeting for?
I mean, I think we can. I don't think we can.
You have to keep it or you're not?
We're going to, we're not going to do the live stream, from my understanding. We will continue to record so that we can post those recordings online after.
Because we're not required to do live postings. We're just, but we're required to record it or required.
But we've, but, but we've posted it as an electronic meeting, so. Because, you know, I wasn't told, instructed any otherwise, but to do that, so.
Thinking about this, we should have just had this meeting and then basically recessed and continued the meeting and have it on this agenda and not called for a special meeting so we don't run into these problems. You know what I mean? We could, we could have recessed at the end of this meeting until four o'clock.
All right.
Let us look at the advertising and we will consult with the attorney and figure out what to do.
All right. All good? Bob?
Good.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have discussion communications regarding the apparent petition. I took a stab and Bob, I dropped you off this morning and for the record, I did not send this out ahead of time to anyone. And I just thought we have an opportunity. This is only a draft, but it's, if you'd like me to read it, I can read it, or if you want to go over it. But what I'd like to do is get this out through our village website, a letter from the mayor. Whether you agree with it or don't, I mean, I'd appreciate if you kind of, I mean, we could all sign this too and do it not from a letter or a letter from council. I'm open to any of that. But my concern was obviously for the petition only at this point. There's so many issues that I could have branched off to and I tried to touch on a few, but in this letter, would you, would you like me to read it? So you guys want to take a few minutes now?
I've, I've read it.
And I'm open to changes, deletions. Again, we can go in so many different directions because of how, what we've seen happen locally and we just don't have the ability to respond as fast. And you have a situation where, you know, you need to vote of people before we go put something out on the website. We need to vote of council. So we can't be that responsive. That's why I prepared this quite frankly. So, but I'm open to any or deletions or just not do anything or take a different approach. But I thought I'd at least have And if you want, we can take a quick recess to have everyone read this so we don't have a lot of dead space on the recording and you guys can get a chance to read this and then we can open up the meeting and if you want to do that, so.
I'm fine. I'm almost done.
Do you want this to go out on the website and all the social media platforms or just the website?
I personally want, I mean, we, we've had a habit of taking village information and going on social, you know, platforms and stuff. But, you know, in the first paragraph, I, I personally don't do that myself, but the, the village is doing that.
Eighty percent.
You know.
Well, we communicate to the residents through the, through the MailChimp and Nextdoor and Facebook. So I'm just wanting clarity.
I would absolutely say MailChimp and the website. And then it's up to you if you want Nextdoor and I think Nextdoor.
But if it's coming from the village, what I'm, what I, I guess I'm asking, if there, we're going to get to anything like some sort of official response to this petition, that I don't want to do this on my own. Certainly, I have the right to go to Nextdoor and those things, but I'd rather have it coming officially from the village of Marvin that, you know.
Just do it through MailChimp and on the website.
But do you also, but, but you also can, my thing is, because you just don't know what people use as their everyday source of, of, of information. I would say put it out. My recommendation, you put it out on everything you possibly put it out. If we have a Marvin newspaper, put it out on Marvin newspaper. And we have a bulletin board, just put on the bulletin board. Only reason is because you're assuming that people do the MailChimp. You're assuming that there's only a limited number of sources in which they get it and they get it from a lot of different ways. And then people, how do people disseminate it? How do people share it? So if we can share it, why didn't that go, why didn't that go on social media? Or why didn't it go on this? So they can share. My recommendation would be put it out on every viable source to get it out because it's the same. Transparency comes in many different ways. It's the source, it's the means in which you get it out. So I would, my recommendation, we put it out on every single one of them. So everyone has, there's, we haven't missed them. Because once you do it once, you don't want to go back and do it again. You don't want to send it out on, if there's ten and you send it out on seven, and then someone says, why did we send it out? And then, and then you send it out on the other three. Then you're, you're kind of losing someone. I would pick the sources of which you, that we have the ability to send it out, send it out on all of them, making sure they get it out.
I, I think my point to this as far as sending out is I personally don't want to, even though we all have the right to kind of use venues that some have chosen to use. And I think it's inappropriate because that's not the venue for it, especially if you have a role within this community. And I, I think individually, but as a group, we only get together twice a month. And, you know, how we, how we get to this is, you know, we're going to rely on you as a, as the town manager to maybe say, hey, if we have to get something out quick. But this, we still have time to the end, well, to June, I guess. But this was something I was trying to focus it in. And maybe we get to a point where I'm drafting a monthly letter just to kind of.
I actually like that idea. But we'll come back to that in a minute. We can talk about that within the communications section. I think that it is, I think this is good, Joe. I think on the second page, you need to say, where you say many towns in North Carolina currently operate under this form of government, it's eighty-eight percent. And I would write that because in the propaganda that was, or the referendum thing that was sent out, it says that, you know, the, that it is basically trying to hide behind that. So there's eighty-eight percent of towns in North Carolina that are trying to hide behind the manager council form of government.
That are like size.
That are like size.
Eighty percent of the like size do this, what we're changing to.
Yes, correct. And then just grammar back here. There are many reasons. I have a third page.
I made this big because I, I can't see very well. So it's not very long, I don't think.
I think it's good. I'm fine with you sending that out. Jamie, I'm fine with him, you guys sending it out to every possible place it can go. Again, I think having more is better.
Anything you'd add or anything you'd want to take out? I just, I want to be able to walk away from here and then I can send the word to.
No, I like this. And I, I, and then I know Christina, you've got something to come out from the village, just kind of a frequently asked questions. You have in there January, which was my recollection, that that's when we started these discussions.
That's why I wanted to really bet this.
You have February.
Is when it was publicly stated in the agenda. Now, y'all could have very well discussed it in January, but it was, no, I didn't look at minutes. I just looked at an agenda.
So is it our retreat that we discussed it?
No, that was the twenty, February twenty-seventh.
That y'all had it on an agenda, on the agenda.
And, and I wasn't sure, but I think we talked about when the meeting and they, we, I know, I believe it was discussed as a group of what we'd like to accomplish.
Yeah, we, we can look back through the minutes so that we get.
I'm, I'm.
It's on your goals.
Either way.
It was part of your goals at the retreat, but it wasn't actually on an agenda. And my, and my research was based on, on that. So if you want to go with February seventh, that's fine, but our records indicate the twenty-seventh.
Because we didn't get into this.
I'll, I'll clean my, my memo up some.
And then I've got this here. I don't know where this is going.
Yeah. I've prepared just some frequently asked questions. One thing that I would note, Mr. Mayor, is do you want to have anything in here about, if anybody has any questions, where to contact you or someone else?
Yeah, I didn't know how to finish it. And it was about three in the morning last night when I finally, you know, but I, I had to watch my Netflix shows and with those all in and then.
Yeah, I would put your, put, uh, put your con, your email and then put Christina's.
And I've just prepared a couple of factual type questions and questions that we've been asked. I don't know if you want to go over them or.
I, I mean, I'm good putting this out.
Question, oh, you're, a separate one.
Yes. And it's just a frequently asked questions, just like we did in response to some of the Village Center District questions that we've had.
And do, do we want to say, and this is just an ask, or maybe this is a different thing, or maybe this is for you. Do I, we want to say anything about, you know, being aware of where you're getting your information from, that we're going through the process of doing a dot org to a dot gov and that, or, you know, or is that just not the place?
I think that's a separate communication.
Yeah, we didn't want to put too much out at one time. So that, we are going to do that at a later date. We just wanted to kind of keep it short and sweet.
Because I, I think quite frankly, it would take all of about ten minutes of doing your own research to determine that whatever propaganda they were receiving was, you know, but do people do that? And I think that's where I was.
Well, I think that's why we need to be getting information out so that they're all, people are not only getting it from one place that is erroneous.
Have I, have I misstated anything in the letter? Is there a mayor, council, council manager? Is that?
I, I haven't read it in detail to be completely honest with you. But I, I've got factual information in my frequently asked questions. I can match it up. And if there's anything not factual.
I would, I would say between the break of the end of the work session before we come back for the special meeting, Christina could kind of look at it, clean it up, and then we can get it out along with this separately tomorrow.
And is it council's opinion that y'all want this on letterhead, village letterhead, the mayoral letter? The mayoral letter?
Yeah, I would.
I mean, that's good.
Are you fine with saying a letter from Marvin, Mayor Marvin, or is it, you want it from all of you?
No, I think, no, I think it's good. I get, I get other emails from other towns, and they, it's like a note from the desk of, you know, so I mean, I think that having your voice out there is important.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good, I don't mind with these.
I would say that, I would tell the councilman, I think it's important that you get the word out, it comes from you, from the top.
Yeah.
You know, this has gone on, and I think it's well crafted, and I think, you know, the fact that you rely on the fact, you've been around for seven years, you've seen a lot, and I, and I think you give a pretty good picture of how this started, and where you're at now, so I, you know, I think it's, it was well done, in terms of your thought, and this is the current state of why decisions were made.
I do my best work at 3:00 AM.
So if you, if you don't mind, I want to just kind of go over the questions that I've put in this frequently asked questions, in case y'all have received more than I didn't encompass here. I'm not going to read the responses, I'll just read the questions. What exactly are the changes being made to the village charter? Highlighted the two changes, also discussed that there's no change to nonpartisan elections, because there's some stuff floating out there about nonpartisan. How long have these changes been discussed? Was it a rushed decision? How common is the proposed form of government in North Carolina? Will it be unusual to change? Has the charter been changed before without a referendum? Are charter changes permanent? What are the benefits of a mayor council form of government over, I'm sorry, a manager council form of government over a mayor council form of government? And would oversight and transparency be reduced with the proposed changes, including the mayoral vote?
The only other thing I would put in here, is a reminder that, once this is passed, it has to, a question related, so how long does it have to be in place before it can be changed? Because this is not set in stone. I mean, we could have another council a year and a half from now, walk in and say, you know what, we want to go back to the old ways, and we want to control, and if they have the vote, they have the vote.
But it's two, is it two years or four years?
Two, two years.
Two years.
But that would be when the new board comes in anyway, so it's...
Well, my, my question is, is like, or I guess if you form a question, is this permanent? Can, you know, or maybe ask a question like that, is this permanent? And say, you know, the state statutes say, when we make a change like this, we're required to keep that change for two years.
And the response that I've given here, that I've got prepared, is no, charter changes are common in government, it's not uncommon to see changes as elected bodies and organizational needs change, charters can be reamended if they do not work out as intended.
And again, we're doing this to improve, for the employees, for staff members, and we're doing this to keep business going.
I think in combination, your communication and theirs, for those who read it, let's assume twenty percent read it, which is, I think, high.
Right, that's a...
It addresses both, both of them address it, comprehensively.
Anything else? So what I will do is, when I leave here from this meeting, I'll clean up a few things.
Okay.
I will send you it in a Word document, an attachment to you only, and then I'll leave it to you to disperse, and I think we agree to be on the letterhead.
On village letterhead.
And so it's coming from the village, not from an individual on the other, but I agree with you, most, you know, we're getting our information in various ways, but...
And Councilmember Mark Lees, you're, you're good with all that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Moving on, we have a discussion of revised defense poll, C ordinance, OR dash two oh two oh dash oh five dash oh five.
So this is for discussion only.
Is it in here?
It is.
Where is it?
The, show me before that, yeah, right there, you just have your hands on it. No, before.
This is the retreat.
The back.
And this is the petition. I go from the petition.
Well, I have one other thing in there, there's retreat report, yeah, discussion.
No, it's in there, I've got it, you got it in yours? Here's mine.
Retreat report.
Oh, yes.
It's after the retreat?
It's after the retreat, it must be after the report.
Then I go to annexation.
It's out of order, again, we need to work on that. Look after the retreat.
Oh, here it is, it's right after retreat.
Mine's not.
Sign a couple pages.
Mine's not. After the retreat, I go to the annexation.
That's it, right there, that's it, that's it.
Was, this was, you're going to point out the revision, because I looked at, and I'm trying to figure out from what point it was revised, or not knowing.
Yeah, and it should have been printed in red, but, and we'll make sure the revision, I'll highlight them for you, but, okay, this is not the right one.
I mean, I'm fine, but I didn't see, and highlighted where the revision was, so.
It's what, it's not...
I said it's where it's on page...
Before he asked me to...
What happened?
I know where it is.
Did you see?
Yeah, but I know what happened. We, there's some comments in here that Chaplin had mentioned, and I tried to print it without, without all the comments, and so I think what happened is it, it accepted all the changes. So let me, let me, let me highlight them for you, and let you know what they are. I'm not asking for any action to be taken on this, it's just for discussion, and we'll make sure it's a little more delineated in the next meeting, so that y'all can see these. On the first page, the very second sentence, we changed some information in there that says, I'm just going to read it, the new one.
Okay.
Uniform standards under the defense of civil and criminal actions, it brought against city officers, so it, whereas before it said entered against, and we kind of changed it to brought against. So no real substantive changes there.
Okay.
Are we, as I look through this, are we looking to protect potential people going forward who decide to run for an office position? That can, can we add that, or ask that to be added into the insurance policy? Because I think we may find ourselves if, with what continues to be, you know, almost like a bullying situation, where, you know, people aren't going to step up. And again, I'm glad I'm having, we're having five people look to become council member, but at the end of the day, you know, Joe Citizen, who runs for office, as we all know, can, can be sued for any reason. And it just, it just, you know, we're such a small community as it begins with, and I just like something in here to be, that this never happens again, or at least, I mean, if you're doing something wrong, that's different.
Well, I can, I can speak firsthand, that, and I want to, hopefully, who's recording this, or the microphone speaking firsthand, that if anyone would have, could imagine costing them in excess of $25,000...
Personally.
Personally, out of your checkbook, that it's because of frivolous, and it could be for, for real, if you bring it on yourself, I think there's a provision in there that should say, if you bring it on yourself, by all means, you're going to pony up for it. But personally, if I've gone through a, if I've gone through a, where a petition or filing against an election, and I'm, and that cost X amount, and then I've gone through some kind of frivolous for something, I've completely 100%, it didn't even make it to, to a case, and it was thrown out, and it costs an additional X amount of dollars, where personally, you're at $25,000 over something, you couldn't recoup it in 15 years? And I'm appalled, I'm appalled when I got the propaganda that goes out, that someone says, you're increasing your stipend by 50%. Wouldn't someone love to have that? I tell you what I'll do, to anyone listening, I'll trade that stipend, give me my $25,000 back. But write a check, don't spread it out over a certain amount of years, I want it in a check, and give it to me personally. Councilman Mark Lees, am I, did I miss anything?
Uh, no, sir.
So get your facts straight, get your facts straight when you're, as a propagandist. And when you look at this, and if you think it's, if you think it's just protecting someone or trying to, it's not. It's, to Joe's point, it's bullying, it's abhorrent to me, I'm, I'm just, I still, it just goes through, especially, I've got kids in college, I'm paying for a college education, and I didn't walk into this thinking I was going to get, I was going to have a lawsuit costing me over $25,000, and I didn't do one thing wrong, zero. The rest of everyone else was covered. Even if they did something wrong, they were covered. I did nothing, I, I'll speak for myself, did nothing wrong, and it still cost me, if I were a citizen, in any form of government, I would never run knowing that that's a possibility. That someone could sue me for just something they want to make up. And in all likelihood was done under a contingency lawsuit. I'm getting off on a tangent. But I hope it, I hope it brings light to a point of why this is even brought up.
And I think in the end, somehow, even if it has to be, you know, we all get the same insurance municipality share from the state, I think, if I'm not mistaken, we all share the same, and we know a lot of times insurances are trying, you know, they're in the business not to pay claims and stuff, and they look for any reason not to pay things, but if, you know, if you've done something illegal and wrong, to your point, you're on your own. But just running for a position of council to be, to make this community better, and have that hanging over for the next one that comes in, is unacceptable, so if we have to add it to our insurance to be covered, because the, I believe the deductible is $1,000 currently on something like that, but, but, you know, and to your point, have some store stipulation in there, but if they actually were accused of wrongdoing during an, I'm, I'm more worried about election, because once you're in office, you're pretty much indemnified by the insurance company unless you were to do something illegal, and they find that out, then you're on your own for that. But just running, Joe Citizen, just running for, is not covered, is, is quite frankly frightening, and that, that goes to planning board members, board members that, you know, decide to run for a position. They could be potentially, just because somebody doesn't like them. But it, it has to be addressed in here, and whether it increases the cost, because I, we need to let other communities know, too.
So to answer your question, we did not include any provisions for candidates or prospective members of boards or council members. The only real changes we made to this were kind of clarifying changes that we, as in Chaplin and I needed, to make sure that we understood the policy and how it was intended to be problematic. So what I can do, instead of going back and going through every single detail, I will go back and do some more research with Chaplin to see if we can add some provisions for candidates in here.
I would, I would do that, and I'll talk to the league and see what they have to say about it.
And yes, I've got a note to do that as well, so.
Just, just to add to that point, because I've, because it's impacted me, and it's directly impacted me financially, I would make a recommendation, because I look at it, because guess what? You can't say in 100% of elections, someone loses, because some people run unopposed. The vast majority of elections, some people are good, and they go, you know what, congratulations, you won. There are people out there that are not good, that are sore losers, they want to, they want to pick apart, and they want to do stuff, they're just, let's just, for the lack of better terms, there are bad actors in this world today. Unfortunately, I got caught up with some. My recommendation, as I've thought about this many, many ways, is to somehow, through the state of North Carolina, to, to have a group of attorneys that, that would say, okay, pro bono, or whatever the case may be, they would sign up, they would get credit for being one of those attorneys, or law firms, that in, in my event, would say, okay, we're going to assign you to this, these three law firms, and you can pick and choose which ones you want. That law firm would take my case, pro bono, where it doesn't impact me financially, but I have representation. The state of North Carolina, I would take, take it to the state, though, the state of North Carolina should have the provision in there that if someone runs for office, you have a sore loser, because you know what? The people that did it, the people that did it to me, the persons that did it to me, could be on the same end of it. Think about that. They could be on the same end of it. With that being said, I wouldn't want it to happen to them, I would say I lost. Congratulations, represent us well. But the state of North Carolina, if I said, you know what, I'm a sore loser too, and I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm just going to keep digging, the state of North Carolina says, we're going to assign you these three attorneys, you do them, and then they pick that up, pro bono, and then the case is then fought, that if there's legal representation on both sides, and it goes, and it's not impacted by the people, because that's the only way you're going to get people not to run. If I were in the village of Marvin, there's no way in hell I would run. Because I know that there, I know there are players sitting out there now that have made it insinuated, have already insinuated in the propaganda, that if things don't go right, guess what? You can, it's going to cost you a lot of money. And if you're willing to do that, God bless you. And I think it's a, I'm ashamed, I'm ashamed for those people.
We can solicit our representatives to sponsor a local bill, or to sponsor a statewide bill and present it in front of the legislature?
I would say statewide, because if you do it locally, if you do it locally, so, it's going to impact someone else on, in another county that does, that has, they don't have the means, or the thought, or even knew that it happened. That, you know, we did it here, but in Bladen County, Bladen County, it happens to them, and they don't even know it. So my recommendation, why not take it to the state level, you sign a, you know, you put it out there for 20 law firms across the state, do it in sections, do it in the eastern, the Piedmont, and the, and the western, and do it. There's a way to structure to do it, but you can't do this, because, again, you're going to have people that, you're going to have people that are just going to be discouraged from running, because you know that, I'm going to...
Then in the end, who do you really get as, as members of council that are running? Because it's like, you know, the good people, the good people aren't going to go after, if you won, and you won fairly and stuff, but there may be people out there saying, I'm not going to touch that based on what you and Bob went through, you know?
If you keep the status quo, and we look at the terms, and how many council members and all that, if you keep the status quo, within seven years, you could have a group of people that, that have gone through the lawsuits, and gone through this, you could have that group of people on your, as mayor and council, simply because, if you're not in that group, you're going to get sued. And we have contingent law firms that are willing, they're like ambulance chasers, they're willing to do it, because if they push it long enough, someone's going to cave in. So in seven years, you could have, you could have a, a Jim Smith, Joe Smith, whatever the case may be, council and mayor, because everyone else is afraid to do it, because if you're against them, and it's the squeaky wheel gets the oil, if you're against them, you're going to get sued. If you're with them, and you, and you sign up for their corruption, because we know it's corrupt, I got, it's cost me $25,000 to shine light on the corruption that has happened in the village of Marvin over the past couple of years. But what about the person that doesn't have $25,000 to go defend themselves? It's absurd. And that group of people should be ashamed of themselves. But also, the other people that live in the village of Marvin should know about it, and trust me, they will. should know about it and trust me, they will.
I think it has to be a two-pronged approach. I think we have to have something and I think going and doing something.
I would love to be the one and along... Because I'm sure Councilman Mark Leese would love to put his name on a bill to send it up to the state of North Carolina that says, "I wanna present this bill so this doesn't happen again." That shuts it down.
We will work on that two-pronged approach.
We have to have something to protect people and then the state should have something. And then if the state hasn't, then we won't have to, but...
It may be the next work session. It may not be the next meeting, but...
That's fine.
That's fine. I just...
But it's gotta get started. So we can... You can just hold off on this until we get more language added to it.
I would say apologize for my rant, but I'm not gonna...
Well stated. Bob, do you have anything to add?
Uh, you know, Jamie said it. And I know that personally, I wanted to serve the community and just be a part of shaping especially this exciting time in the village. Be a part of shaping some of the things that we're looking at, some of the goals we're trying to achieve, involving the public. And after all this, it's like, the first thing I would suggest to anybody is don't run. Don't get into... Don't get in the public. That's the way I feel about it. It's like, really, it's really hard motivationally to, you know, go through month by month and you're, you know, just feel like, you know, what did I get involved in this for?
One last point. To each, when you do it and you are the one that has been elected, you are forced to defend yourself. You can't... You don't have a choice of stepping back. That's what hurts. Because once you're elected, you're in this and you're here to serve. The protest of the election itself, you have to defend yourself. You can't say, "No, no, no, I'm not gonna defend myself." When you file a federal civil suit, you can say, "You know what? I'm not gonna fight it. I'm not gonna go get an attorney and I'm not gonna fight it." It goes on your record for the rest of your life that you did all of the proposed allegations you're guilty of. So you are forced by proxy to have to defend yourself. So even if it goes nowhere, you're... I know personally, you're at least minimum 25. $25,000 in and you've done nothing wrong. Let's just say that you didn't dot an i. You could be, because of technicality, you could be 50, 75, $100,000 in, pick a number. Because they just keep riding the horse as long as they'll do it till you say, "All right, I give and I'm out of money." And then, and then, there you go. Oh, by the way, your stipend is $300 a month. Try to recover $25,000 or $100,000 off of $300 a month. Again, let me go back to the basic question. Who in their sane, right mind would run for a position? In the Village of Marvin specifically, but then over the state of North Carolina? Who would run? Nobody. Unless you're in that circle of people that they want you elected. Because they know that if you're in that circle and you're doing the bidding for them, then they won't file lawsuits. It's a shame. It's appalling that there are people that my neighbors in my community have the gall and the absolute indecency to do. And I won't shut up for four years of this. I'll get my $25,000 worth. Won't be the last time you hear it.
All right. Thank you, Jamie, Bob. And I think there's to Jamie's point, there's something that just needs to be... We gotta take action on, but I think to Jamie's point, state level, it needs to get involved. And we can appeal through, I guess, a resolution to the local communities as well to...
We will get with our attorney to draft a bill to get a sponsor for. We'll probably have to make a trip to the state, plead your case and...
I'm $25,000 in. What's the take of gas?
Yeah. All right. I assume you guys will ride together and save on gas when you head out there, so. All right, moving on. Thank you. And next up, we have discussion of retreat report from Central Indiana Council of Government, CCOG.
So in your agenda packet is the retreat report that the council of government put together for us. It kinda summarizes everything. On page six, there's two different options that they had given us for our vision statement that we had discussed. This is an area where she wanted you to pick, you know, one or the other that she's got presented on page six, right at the top of the page. Not sure if you're prepared to talk about that today or if you just wanted to have time to look over this and then we can bring it back at another.
I like option two.
And Councilmember Mark Leese, do you have that retreat report in front of you?
I do. Yeah, I was going to say option two, I liked as well.
Do you need it? Do you need it?
Yeah, it really says everything that we're, you know, our goals and things that we're working on, the survey results. It's compiling everything. And it's saying that, you know, we wanna be welcoming and a vibrant residential community. You know, quite the word historic. You know, and that's kinda like why I like a little bit of option one. You know...
I think you kinda get that with heritage and option two.
Heritage in there, that kinda gives the same thing.
Yeah, I'd probably, if I had to choose between one or two, I'd probably certainly lean towards two because of all the feedback we've had and all the talk about doing something that, you know, everybody has that special town they love going to or, you know. And that doesn't mean big box stores. I think that's those are close enough by. But making it, you know, when we talk about farmers market and doing things right. And you really only have one chance to do it right. Because you start doing things and not having a master plan with it, it creates all kinda concerns after the first shovel is put into the... Put into anything. But yeah, I do like that. Probably would lean towards that one as well.
Is that the consensus of the board to stick with that one? Okay. And then if you turn the page over to page seven, what we can do is get that on our website updated so that we have accurate information out. And we will move forward with implementing some things from there. Number seven, there's in the middle of the page, the revised mission statement. I think I might have said mission on the first one. I meant vision. The one y'all just discussed was vision. The one that's next is mission. And there's two options there of a why or what.
I like the first option.
Yeah. That would kinda coincide better with what we just decided on as far as the mission or mission, but what is that considered?
On a vision.
Statement for foundations, strategic plan, yeah. Okay. Anyone else in the comment?
I like one.
One.
Bob?
What did you say? I'm sorry.
One or two on page seven.
On page seven.
We like option one.
Oh, I was gonna say that, yes. I just...
Okay. We got unanimous. Anything else on that?
Anything else on that?
No, not on that. And then if you turn to the very last page, the front.
Which one?
At the front of it. Those... What page is that number?
Eight.
I'm getting you a copy. Those goals that are highlighted there in that table, we needed to review those as well. He's getting a copy.
I have a copy.
I already got it.
Did you not get a copy of the report?
I didn't see it. I didn't see it. It is probably in there.
It's right there. That's the last page. Thank you.
Okay, I'm fine with those.
Wait, it's one or the other, right?
No.
No, it's just goals in general.
So your goal is to create spaces and then it's like how to achieve those goals? And then, yeah. You go with that.
And they continue on to the next. They continue on to the next page as well. So what we will do at the end of... We'll try to do like a mid-year analysis to make sure that our budget projects are matching up with our goals as we move along. And that's what we'll continue to do as we prepare future budgets as well. Any other direction, action that y'all wanna see from this report?
I think the money was well spent. They put together a nice place of what we accomplished at our retreat.
I thought they presented it well.
Me too.
I don't think that's... We've never done that before in the past, have we?
Well, I know they used to go away, the council, like literally go on a retreat somewhere, pick a place. Then we moved it to Firefore and then we saved money. We had it here with a lunch brought in. But we've done it, I think, once to kinda help guide, but never got this kind of thing before from us. This is a little more...
It's always good to have a third party person.
Absolutely. So, very good. All right. Thank you. Next up, we have discussion voluntary annexation plan.
Okay. So, a few meetings ago, we had talked about how it is that we go about annexing this area here. You have the map in the PowerPoint presentation, but this light blue area here, which is Marvin planning area. But, you know, in my research, in doing research on annexation plans, it's a much more involved process really. And a lot of it stems on the fact that you need to... To develop an annexation plan, you need to develop the actual plan of how you intend to extend the services that we offer to this area without hindering the delivery of that service to our current area. So this memo and the attached presentation, the presentation just kinda breaks it down. But the memo helps, you know, detail, you know, what are our services? How would we create the plans? And a lot of that does have to do with public involvement. I know in the past that, you know, province towns, province down south have resisted annexations. But potentially by not just having an advertisement package, but actually developing the plans of how we would extend. And there's a list of our services here. We have a trail network, you know, our parks and various other things. That would go a lot farther in convincing people that annexing into Marvin would be beneficial to them, their house and their neighborhood. Let's see. So four steps here in developing an annexation plan. This is kind of a several month process. First, we have to develop the tax impacts, probably per neighborhood of annexing each of the neighborhoods that are in this area. I guess the step zero is to make sure that this is the correct area that we want to consider annexing. Other maps I've seen include the Somerset-Hunter Oaks area. Then we would hold public input meetings or distribute a survey. I think that the survey might be a better route in the current situation to determine people's willingness to annex. And then we use that result to develop the phasing map. Just doing it geographically isn't enough because we wanna have... We wanna start with success. You know, we've gone, you know, several years, almost a decade and our area hasn't really looked much different other than Weddington Chase. And I think having a public input meeting, starting, not imposing what we want on other people, but asking them what they want would go a long way in a successful beginning of an annexation plan. Let's see. And then we have to coordinate with the county and neighboring municipalities. We do have annexation agreements with Weddington and Wac... No, Weddington and Wesley Chapel. That actually expires this year. It's a 20-year agreement that was made in 2000. We also have one with Charlotte. I think we should make one with Waxahaw because they actually did annex this area down here. So coordinate service plans.
And that was voluntary?
Yes, it's all voluntary. They've recently, 2011, the state has removed most circumstances of municipal initiated annexation. The circumstances are...
So these people were just willing to pay a 38 cent tax rate when they didn't pay anything before?
You see, they're neighborhoods now. I think they... It's quite possible that the developer annexed before they built their area. But of course, in every other case, we would have to convince individual homeowners at a, you know, one at a time to annex.
So how does, as we are considering the other neighborhoods and stuff, and we have essentially what's R40 zoning, which a lot of these neighborhoods wouldn't qualify. Is that correct to say that?
We created a new zoning district and you can see it in that map where, I'll pull it off the wall. Where neighborhoods that were in Union County, but then later annexed into Marvin are going to be zoned in this orange colored district, which is just a zoning district to allow them to, you know, be compliant with their neighborhood.
And what is that area?
This is just zone RUC.
Yeah, but that one's Providence Glen.
This is, yeah, Providence Glen, Daryl Farms, Weddington Chase.
So, just to give a little bit of history for a lot of you and conversations I've had with former councils, there was fear from some council members that by adding certain neighborhoods that weren't in the same R40 zone, they didn't have one acre lots, that you'd see the balance of the elections change because you could essentially have neighborhoods, you know, coming in. And I think that's where, if we go forward with this, that we have districts representing different neighborhoods and that doesn't become the issue of the thing. But it was, I've had many discussions knocking on doors that people were very upset that they weren't allowed in. And it was from some individuals, council members, who kinda shut the door behind them. Even their own neighborhood didn't qualify for, to be Marvin, if you will, because of the minimum acreage and stuff. So it was a little disheartening because I think this should be a little more defined area. And, you know, looking at other areas that are higher density because of what they were allowed, I mean, there's a... It's something to be discussed. And I know that was on a lot of their minds when you look at, you compare a density like that to some other areas. But I've had those conversations, never have been involved in it. And again, one of the council members was actually in a neighborhood that on its own didn't even... It is part of Marvin, but on its own doesn't necessarily, when you look at the...
One acres.
One acre lots, they don't even meet that. So that's something to give thought to as we try and form this map. And then that's where I... And then that's where I think, if you get that type of thing, we'd almost have to take it like by community. Then we start looking at districts for someone to represent that community, someone to represent maybe the west side, the east side, south side, and then some, uh, what do they call it?
So...
At-large members.
What do you, what, where, what do you need from us right now?
Um, directions on the first step. And I know I've said a lot, but the first step really boils down to, uh, discussion of why we want these areas in Marvin, why these areas want to be in Marvin, and then an actionable first step is to start talking about, uh, public input, how we go about that.
Yeah, because right now, they're getting representation without taxation. Nobody wants to pay a tax if they don't have to. So you, you may could have fifty percent.
But they're, but they're not getting representation. They, you could, you could argue that they are, but really, they're not. So something, I, I don't know, just pick a, pick a topic. State of North Carolina comes in and says, "We're gonna do this." They're on their own. Are they gonna send their HOA president up there?
Right.
How much, really, how much impact or power are they gonna have? They're gonna say, "Don't waste my time." However, if they're in the village of Marvin, or if they're from a town, they have representation.
What comes to mind, and I probably said that too quickly, what comes to mind is the roundabout, that we have paid, Marvin residents have paid for officers, yet we get complaints from Waxaw saying, "Why aren't those officers on that corner before those roundabouts?" So we paid for those. We participated in those roundabouts. We're participating in this. We're paying for those officers. And that's where I mean by the representation without taxation. But to your point, I, I, I think that's, uh...
And, and in all fairness, if, if I were in the light blue?
Yep.
Give me a compelling argument. Give me some, because when people hear annexation, they think that that's a negative term. I don't care who you are and what you do. We should make, we should provide the services and the, and the added, added value of wanting to be in the village of Marvin. And I would argue, bigger picture, that comes from doing the, the farmer's market, and once you start adding stuff to it, and you have, and you have, this is, this is a little trinket of mine that I just think is cool. It gives it a small-town feel. You have Marvin Day. You have the Marvin Day Parade. You have Miss Marvin. You have this. You have these little things. Guess what? That light blue then turns dark blue. Because they're like, "Well, why can't we be a part of that?" "Oh, you said you didn't want that one cent tax." Or, you know, "You don't, you didn't wanna be annexed." Well, we do. You know what? We do get the representation. We do get, we, we provide the list of, we provide the list of positives, what goes along to being a part of it.
So one of the tricky things that with this, what, what we are referring to as the donut hole, is that they are not fearful of Waxaw hopping over and giving, if, if the state, and correct me if I'm wrong, if the state ever says, "Okay, that forced annexation, we're gonna go back to that. We're gonna allow towns to," and there's talk about it, allow towns, because this is...
Oh, the last time we were, the thingy was the discussion.
And, and it's happening in all different communities, and it's, and in neighborhoods. You have some people paying the tax, some people not. So they may go back, they say, "Well," the state may go back and say, "We're gonna rethink this and allow communities to absorb, uh, this." And these guys right now, I can tell you, the donut hole feel very protective, because they know that Waxaw's never, they're never gonna get a thirty-eight cent tax. But they could potentially get a five cent tax. And at the end of the day, the average, I think we determined was about three hundred and some dollars per year, per resident. And, but, but what, what comes in with that are all the other benefits of, you know, taxes from, uh, rather motor vehicles, all those little things that add up, that, you know, a lot, would allow us to, uh, create that community you're talking about.
Okay, so what do you need from us? Yes, um, I, I would like direct, I mean, this is, this, plan creation is a four to six month process. So that's, that's what I've estimated that. So if you, if you guys are really confident that you wanna go forward with this, I would like direction on, you know, researching what, like, the, the public input, basically, just to get started.
So are you saying, like, which neighborhoods you want? Like, I don't, I don't understand what you need from us.
So let me, let me just interject real fast. In order for you to really do your tax analysis as to how much, let's just say, neighborhood X is gonna bring in tax-wise, would determine basically what level, not level of service, but what would be beneficial to that community. If they're gonna bring in five hundred thousand dollars, then we can up our road game to offer a better service of road improvements for them. So would it be feasible for you to start identifying the most feasible neighborhoods slash, um, areas to bring in? Do your tax analysis, and then maybe have some recommendations as to what services you could bring to that individual neighborhood. From that point, they can look at this list and say, "Yep, we agree with all this. Let's go ahead and start the public input sessions." So that we can meet with those individual property owners, neighborhoods, HOAs, and then we can move forward in that manner. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but I think we can do those things simultaneously, because, uh, public input, uh, process is not, I mean, we can start developing it in, in advance, and then actually start moving forward with it once we finish the tax, uh, impact assessment.
But I don't understand why we'd have a public input meeting if we don't have all the material together to sell the idea to, to the residents.
Oh, I guess what I mean by that is, you know how long it took for us to create the land use plan survey? Took like a year, right? To deliberate on what those questions should be, um, might take several months before we even get to the point of distributing that survey. So what I'm, I'm saying is, we could start by, you know, we, we already know that this is the general area. Maybe a few more neighborhoods, maybe a few less. But, uh, so we can start with a tax impact analysis per subdivision today.
Yeah.
And also, if I could get direction to maybe, like, I think maybe planning board should start this, uh, to, to start a, like, a survey or like a, a way to, like, just a way to interact, whether it's in the public input meeting or it's in a survey, just to create that language. Like, what are we gonna ask these people to gauge who wants to join Marvin?
What, what are you looking to achieve in the survey? That's the question. Like, I'm, I'm not really...
Right. So you're, you're saying for me, to ask me what neighborhoods I think are most feasible. I mean, I could look at the history of the communication with them, but I can't, I can't possibly know what each of these neighborhoods do, because in my day-to-day, I only interact with the neighborhoods that are in Marvin.
But they're not gonna be able to assess that either. We, as a body, can assess which ones are most feasible.
Right, but with a public input process, then we can.
But I guess the question is, what are you getting out in the public input, or what are you looking to achieve?
I feel like we're, we have to sell it. We have to sell it to them.
Right, we have, well, that's why I'm saying the two things that we can start on is the, the package of, you know, how we deliver these services to these areas, and then the survey, which, as I said, it'll take a, a little while to develop. So if we could start that now, that would be great.
I, I'm still confused about the survey. We can start on the tax analysis impact and putting the package together. And you and I can discuss the survey and what the intent of the survey is. Um, but I feel like, to Councilmember Van den Berg's point, I don't understand what we're, we're gonna have to get out there and sell it, other than soliciting input from them. It's gonna be us selling the product, not necessarily...
Yeah, I don't feel like if we just put out a survey, that we're gonna look at this and be like, "I'm not paying extra to, you know, whatever." I feel like we're gonna have to go out and sell them on why they wanna be in Marvin.
Okay. I can understand that. So at first, then, we can start developing these service, uh, plans.
Yeah.
And then maybe a month or two from now, we can start talking about public input. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Is it, is it too far to ask that we, um, ask like, uh, this be a role of our planning board to come together with some sort of, if there is a survey involved or questionnaire involved, and it's like, you know, maybe start from them, so we're not getting into this?
Yeah, no, I think planning board should definitely be working on this. Um, I mean, I know they're wrapping up the land use plans, and this'll be a good next kind of project for them to, to kinda, yeah, 'cause I mean, they're, they're all in the land use plan, so they've got all that information, which is probably gonna be great for those neighborhoods that we're looking at. Like, here's, here's what we've been working on. Here's what we're doing. You can talk about, you know, the zoning ordinances, you know, all that good stuff. Um, one person that you guys may wanna talk to is John Berisich, because I know at some point, he said during one of our Park Second Greenway meetings that he had a, like, a annexation pamphlet to hand out about all the, you know, reasons to move into, you have it already.
And he was successful in the past, too.
You've sent him an email. I've sent him an email, but I can follow that up with him on there. It's on the action plan to follow that up.
Okay, good. Okay.
All right. So let me ask one question real fast. So I, I feel like you've gotten the idea of having a survey from someone else or in the research you've done?
Well, it's, well, it's mostly, well, someone else, as in things, things that I've found on the internet, um, for what other towns like us have done. To develop a phasing map, it's most effective to ask the neighborhoods, you know? If we're gonna do a phasing map, we wanna start phase one with the neighborhoods that are most likely to annex. And how do we find that out? Well, by asking them.
Yeah, I think, I, I think you're gonna have to go to like an HOA meeting and ask them. I don't think it's gonna be through like a survey.
That's fine.
Or HOA's be invited by planning board or us to just...
To do, to do something, because I, I think if you, you know, somebody gets a survey in the mail, they're not in Marvin, they're not interested in it. But I think it's gonna be more personable to have to go to, to a meeting, or have a meeting, or sit down with their HOA board and talk about the feasibility of it, then they can present information to their neighborhood. If we, you know, they need us to come in, we can do that. But I think it's gotta, it's gonna, it's gonna have to be a person-to-person kind of situation.
Yeah, that, I, that makes sense. And at first, I, I thought it should be that way, but of course, then I included the option of the survey because of the, you know, the circumstances.
I, I think we're small enough, and I think we can make this personable enough and not so cut and dry, that it's like, hey, we really want you guys to come into Marvin. Like, you know, here's, here's why we think, you know, we can be, you know, good, you know?
But that starts with, that starts with the tax.
Yeah.
Yeah, the tax impact and then starting to develop the, the way...
Kind of, kind of each package to present.
How, where, why?
When?
And then, right, when, and then take it to a board, HOA board, let them disseminate it, and get the, get a special meeting that we attend.
Yep.
Let them run it.
Yep.
And have questions and go from there. But I think it starts, you know, let's just, I think the first thing you do is put together the, the structure.
Yes, and the, the package per neighborhood.
Right, but I think, but it's the, but it's the process package that we have to come up with to say, okay, first thing to do, tax analysis. Come up with the, the, the presentation of services and, and back to them.
And I absolutely think it'd be good for planning board to, because again, they're gonna be kinda wrapping up the land use plan, so this would be a nice segue for them to move into that.
So Real Hit and I will meet to talk about kind of a plan. He'll get started on the tax impact analysis, and then we can put together a package and bring it back, some, some information back to you at the next work session.
And, and just out of curiosity, we're all good with, uh, if you have gates, you get to keep your gates, but you just don't move your roads?
Sure.
Say that one more time.
If you're a community that has gates, currently, we don't allow gates, and that's not on the agenda to add gates or have those available. But once you put a gate up, those roads are yours. But they, we could grandfather any, and I think we have in some cases, grandfathered some neighborhoods that have had gates that are now Marvin, and they just don't get...
But they take care of their roads.
They take care of their roads, so.
I'm good with that.
As long as it's not a public road, they can maintain a gate. If it's not publicly funded.
Right.
So it, we wouldn't take over the roads, yes.
Right, right. Well, I just, that's, gives them their autonomy to stay, I mean, there's a reason they put the gate in, I'm sure, and, uh, you know.
Okay.
I'll make sure that we're on the same page. Bob, anything else you wanna add?
Mayor, I just had a question, a comment when you had the phrase "representation." When I, uh, during the election was working one of the precincts, a lot of people were coming to the precinct that I was at, that obviously their men weren't there, they weren't enrolled, and then they realized they had to drive to Waxaw. Are these the people that are in these donut holes that were showing up at precincts that were...
Yeah. Yeah, some learn on Election Day that they have no place to go vote. And some just are truly Waxaw residents that have to vote in Waxaw. But a lot of them, I would say more, have come in, because they feel that they're part of Marvin, and that is their voting pool, but then they learn that they're not really part of Marvin, so, and, you know...
So is that the selling point? I mean, is that something that we can also add and say?
Absolutely. I think, you know, that goes back to Jamie's point, you know, you want to be able to be represented, and you're not gonna be represented by your HOA at the state level or any other level, so that's, that's one of the benefits. And we just gotta come up, and I know, I think I said something, I wrote a letter a while ago, I'll have to dig it up, but I wrote a whole reason, but it got to be so long, why you'd wanna be Marvin. But there's, there's, there's the naysayers that'll always be out there saying that there's no reason to have to do that. And whether or not we get help from the state, I don't know if they ever change that rule or not, but, it, it has created issues in many municipalities across the state, so.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on that? All right, next up, we have, uh, discussion of pedestrian refuge options. And that is Christina?
Yes.
So there's nothing in the package, is what you handed us?
Yes, I just got some of this information in, so I handed out the, the stuff that was delivered to your door this morning. Councilmember Mark, please, can you pull that out now?
Thank you.
So in response to the vitality that we had on Joe Kerr Road a couple months ago, um, we have been looking into ways to reduce traffic, increasing visibility for pedestrians in this area for some time. We waited for NC DOT to come back with the vitality report to see if they would make any changes or recommendations at their cost. And that has happened, and they have not recommended any changes at this point. So it would be upon us to do any changes that we think are necessary. I initially presented to you the idea of a pedestrian refuge, 'cause it kinda narrows the, the lanes in that area and naturally would reduce traffic speeds when cars are coming through. When the estimates came back for that, because of the need for a road widening, it was gonna be a substantial cost of about ninety thousand dollars. Uh, we knew that wasn't really an option at that point, so we kind of stepped back and looked at other options. And we thought, just a simple crosswalk, a delineated crosswalk with some signage would be suitable. And our engineer had worked with NC DOT, that, that cost was estimated around twenty thousand dollars. However, what's presented before you today is the minimum requirements that the NC DOT would require if we were to do something. And that is approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars. This would be a hundred percent our cost, unless the HOA or HOAs is willing to share anything, which we have not reached out to.
I was gonna say, let's do that.
What about Powellville? Can that be used?
It can be a hundred percent used with Powellville, but I do wanna emphasize that it will change the way our road resurfacing plan will work, because we will be taking money away that we haven't planned to take away.
And what?
So is it like, is it like the bumpy, like, cro, like, so what is it?
It's just a delineated crosswalk with the, the signage.
So the stripes, so what's, so what's the cost? I mean, I mean, I could go out there and spray paint some white stripes on the...
The biggest cost.
Thirty-nine thousand?
It's got some sparkly stuff in it, as you can see.
Okay, so the, or is this the salt, the RRFB solar unit?
Yes, that would be, that would be installed.
And there'd be three of those?
So RRFB stands for...
Sorry, two of those.
Two of them.
What's that stand for?
Rapid, uh, let's...
Response.
Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon.
Rectangular Rapid...
Flashing Beacon.
Where would I know that?
So is it, so is it just gonna go across Joe Carr?
Yeah, and it's one of those, you push the button, and then it starts flashing.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's where the cost is.
I, I mean, some sort of, because of that street, not only being a, a speeding issue on that street for many that have witnessed that, but there's a, you know, kids need to get across, they have their friends on there, people run, you're always seeing people run. We need to start thinking about safe passages, whether they take them or not. I think this is something that is at least a starting point that, you know, we're addressing. And I, I, I could see them utilizing that, you know, there are many kids, or their parents telling the kids, "You need to hit that light, uh, before you cross and stuff," and...
Do we have to get this approved by DOT?
We've been in discussion with them, and we have not submitted an encouragement agreement, but yes, we would have to do that. But in concept, they're okay with it.
Okay. I would absolutely reach out to Marvin Creek.
Okay.
What about lighting?
I, well, this thing lights up, so...
No, 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 I'm saying there were talk of street lights along that area. At one point, someone came in and was doing a request. Uh, and we talked about illuminating that at all?
No, but I think that if, you know, I think we're, we can, we should be talking to Marvin Creek.
We have, just, just as a side note, we are putting together a streetlight policy. As you, as you may recall, we had a similar request, Harley... As you, as you may recall, we had a similar request, probably about three months ago at
Waxaw Marvin Road.
And
Several lines of sections.
We determined some of it was in Marvin, some of it wasn't. So we, you know, our task was to put together
A lighting policy.
Light, lighting policy, which I think is slated for the next agenda.
Yeah, it's, it's in the next work session.
But that, that would be, once we develop that policy, because we're going to get all kinds of requests for additional lighting, and we need to be uniform. So once we start that process, we just, you know, can go by the policy, and that question can come up at that point.
Okay. Yeah, let's talk to Marvin Creek about this. I would also reach out to Carrefour Creek.
Okay.
And, I guess, is it Bridle Path?
Yeah.
The next one down. And then Wyndham Hall, well, it's Bridle Path on that side. And see if they would be interested in doing that from their neighborhoods over to Marvin Creek as well.
Okay.
And then
So just
And then Joe Carr would be nice.
So just to be clear, we're looking at $91,000 if we wanted
Oh, to widen.
To widen the road, but we could, we could address this concern for about $38,000.
Yes.
And our goal would be to have some sort of shared cost with those. And, and, you know, I think that's
Just as a question, too, and I, I totally, totally agree with Councilwoman Vandenberg as far as addressing the other communities. But I, I just have a, you know, just a kind of a legal question. In other states, when something like this, let's say somebody presses the button, this thing is showing all its lights and such, and somebody is crossing, and they're intersected by an automobile of some sort of vehicle, is there more liability? Or like in the cases, case of somebody that's driving a vehicle, are they more charged? Or is that, are they charged because there's this, this obvious
Kind of like a school zone violation, speeding in a school zone?
Yeah.
So, so
That's called liability, should, you know, got to bet something happened. And more, is it like, well, it was obvious, these lights are on and that sort of thing? In other words, that this would be something that we would, you know, post on our website, let people know that the world has changed in this particular area. So they, it's kind of an inference of, you really need to slow down.
So in terms of liability for the village, it, there shouldn't be any, anything that changes. I mean, obviously, people could sue us for any reason at any point in time. But as long as we have not had any negligence that's been known and we've neglected to, to fix something that is a known issue, there shouldn't be any more liability than what's there now. From a standpoint of an individual, yes, they would be more liable because it is
Yeah, not towards the village, I mean, towards the liability to the driver.
Yes, because it isn't against state law to not stop at a pedestrian crossing.
And normally, these kinds of crosswalks are accompanied with a sign. And as you can see here, it's like $300, you can buy a couple of them. And once you see that someone's crossing in the crosswalk, it becomes then illegal for the driver to drive through the crosswalk when the person is walking.
So do we get those, too?
We can, and we can encourage
Yeah, we can. This is a pretty negligible cost and personal project.
Yeah, and I think, I, I like the idea of the flashing and alerting.
I did, too.
Whether it's golf carts crossing, because technically, golf carts could cross on that. That would be a location for golf carts to cross, because I think you can't be on the main roads, but Marvin passed a golf cart. We can use a golf cart in communities, and only, that would be a way to get from one side to the other safely.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, I like the lower cost option. I definitely think we need to partner up, see if we can talk to those three HOAs.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Find out what the jam is, what they're interested in.
You're talking about this?
Okay.
I like that.
Me, too.
Because I, I'm sure there's a study out there somewhere.
And the sparkle. Oh, NC DOT is requiring that. We couldn't just get the, the smaller version.
We have to have that one.
I know, but I, you will see the speed limit come down in a matter of month, couple months at, well, Caesar put in.
And the sparkle.
And we can, and see if, you know, any of the other HOAs are interested in doing them on their streets, because then we could have a reduction in cost if, per unit, that is, if
Get a Groupon, buy one, get one picture.
I mean, is that not what we were talking about dealing at Ennis Brook and
Yes.
Yes.
Wood
Heritage Oaks.
Heritage Oaks.
Not here, not here, which, down further.
Oh, Wood Cliff.
For speed tables.
Wood Cliff, yeah. So where that comes out, yeah, there was always talk, but then there was some
Once we do the
There was some about how we connect that into the, the Ennis Brook neighborhood, so.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor, I, I, I look at it all the time, because where I, I live, there's a, you know, you screw up to the community, the kind of divide, Heritage Oaks and Wood Cliff, there is a path, like a golf cart path, that would then lead to Firethorn. The speeding, and I brought this up, I think, at the last meeting, the speeding, especially when people turn from the town road onto Marvin.
That's crazy.
As you, as, you know, it becomes drag strip all the way to Firethorn. I mean, it's just, they just blast on the road. And I, this, I, I'm kind of enthused about this, because this can be spread to other areas, as we mentioned, other areas of the community. So this is great.
Have we, I know they were doing a, a road study on Marvin Road to reduce the speed. Did we ever get that back?
No, they didn't. They basically said no.
Yeah, they said no.
Yeah, did that. It was, and it's at 45 now?
Yeah, people are at 55, 60, bare minimum.
So moving in, and I really don't know, especially because of that turn that we see all the accidents near Joe Carr, that why, with so many accidents, they wouldn't want to lower that speed.
They're just going straight into the fences.
Yeah.
But the intersection, that intersection specifically is on the next year's, next next year's round of
Right, the first year, yeah.
Yeah, the Union County.
It's been identified as a safety issue.
As a problem.
But maybe part of that is involved in lowering the speed limit.
Yeah.
Having them help us with lowering the speed limit.
But the DOT says that just lowering the speed limit is not effective in lowering speeds.
Okay. So just one more comment, too.
It might be if we get a bunch of tickets.
Maybe we'll put the curves on, just the curve sign going like that.
Yeah, going like that.
Going like that. And increase the speed.
Yeah.
I'm just joking.
Yeah.
One more comment.
You have to be clear about that, so.
One more comment that I'll make, is I've mentioned, if we do this, you know, it does reduce our amount of street resurfacing that we can put in. DOT has said that they're not doing anything next year, and I've told you guys this already. But AMT and I are also going to try to partner up with Waxaw to see if we can do some fog sealing, basically sealing some of the roads and do it as a joint effort, so we can have a reduction in cost. We'll bring that back before you, at a later date, but just so you know, we're trying to piggyback
Awesome.
Some things to reduce the cost as well. If that works out, it may be a wash, so.
Great. Good job.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, real quick, before I forget, we were talking about the annexation and stuff like that. This is a prime example of, of, they're not thinking of it, but to get from one side of one neighborhood to the other, this could be actually be paid for by
The village, yeah.
Right.
It's a shared cost, and we're open to that.
I wouldn't lose sight, I wouldn't lose sight of that as, I wouldn't lose sight of that as a benefit, because
As a bullet point.
The, the HOA's not going to, they're not going to pay for it, but for us to come up with something about the